Got. We have your audio.
So eight thirty-one, meeting is in progress. First order of business is to elect the temporary chair for this meeting. I nominate Rich Baker. The best. It's my motto.
Well, if you 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 want to do it.
I don't mind.
Do you mind doing?
I will, we can divide the labor this way. I've actually printed out the findings of fact. Yeah, I'll do the paperwork.
So I second that.
So in the back of your drawers, as I said, M I B, both S C O and C D R applying to the facts with three whole points, three binder.
Okay. Oh, in the back here. All right. Thank you very much.
So we got to go on that, I guess.
Yes.
So we gotta go do a roll through.
Yes. Sarah?
Yes.
George, yes.
Rich. Reluctantly, yes.
Under protest.
Okay. As my understanding that Mr. Welch is not with us this morning.
I'm here.
Okay. Oh, he's Zoom and the other guy's gonna be in first. Well, good morning, Mr. Welch.
Good morning. How are you?
Good, good. You are proposing to put a ramp on the side of the building, as I understand.
Yeah, my parents' cottage on Long Pond.
Okay, and that's from what I can see is extending no closer to the water than the camp is already.
Correct. It's on the, that would be the B side. It's it's perpendicular to the lake and it's on the driveway side and it is no closer to the water than the camp is now.
And I noticed that you've got a six by six landing. So I am assuming that the existing stairway that you have there is is there, but it's gonna be basically removed and replaced with the six by six landing and new set of stairs.
Correct. My my father took a fall going into the camp last summer and we're eighty, he's eighty-eight, my my mother's eighty-seven, so we want to try and get them, they they spend the summers in Belgrade.
For the board here, I notice on the application, there are things that aren't filled in. I'm not sure they're they're kind of almost like not applicable.
Right.
And for what we're doing here, I'm not sure we got a problem. The map and lot number is is up at the, in the box up top.
Right.
So I'm thinking that we really don't need this other information.
Yeah, this is a simple enough application where I agree with that. Under other circumstances, I wouldn't, but given the limited nature of what's being proposed.
Yeah, okay. Do any of you have any questions of Mr. Welch? I have one other comment, kind of comment and question to the board.
I would just suggest that if we give us a chance to do it, that we put N A in the number six, number seven, number eight. So if we kind of complete, gather some completed.
The problem is, we can't do it. He can, but he's not here.
I I can print it out and then reemail it to Richard if you want in the next twenty minutes or so with the N As there.
That would be fine or it's fine with me whether or not we actually need it. Let's let's do it. If you could print that out, we'll make.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We can proceed, though.
Yes, yes. Are the only George, did you have anything?
No, I don't.
The only thing that I had a question on is it's nothing too major, but the the stairway, the steps are. Let me ask you this. It looks like in the drawing I have, it's the on a graph paper, it shows the four by fifteen ramp. Says camp on the left and then it's got this six by six and it looks like stairs kind of wrap around the whole thing. My we're not talking about six. How far is this from the water?
Um, about twenty-five feet. It was built in nineteen sixty-five, I think.
Okay.
I did the math, Rich, and that's five hundred and four square feet for the camp.
Well, within the total footprint that's allowed.
Right.
Um, Mr. Welch, i- is that six by six landing gonna go on top of the existing? I guess you'd call it a landing. That's the way it looks like on the drawing.
Um, I, if if that's what I need to do, I certainly will. I was I was planning on on removing the the old steps and and just building new if I could. But if if you need me to to keep that as a foundation, I can certainly do that as well.
We just need to be clear on what we're approving because it looks like what you're asking for is actually more than a six by six landing.
Well, there's a ramp.
Because, no, the ramp plus in addition to the and and the six by six landing, but then we have a, I don't know what the scale is on this, but one, two, three, four. Richard, do you know what the scale is on this? Mr. Welch, what's the scale on this on your drawing?
One, two, three, four, five, six, one. One square is one foot on the six by six landing is six squares. And I'm I'm not, I don't know that I drew the 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 stairs to scale, but I will make, I mean, whatever you would like me to do, I will do. If if you need less stairs or fewer stairs or stairs only going on the side, I I'm just concerned with my parents' safety.
My my thinking or thought was that the stairs going around all the way around. Well, it's not an expansion to the water.
Right. He has the square footage.
Yeah. If you if you have square footage and you, I would say that these stairs cannot extend to within twenty-five feet of the water because you can't have an expansion within twenty-five feet of the water. For the structure.
Do you, do you? I I sent a picture, a couple of pictures with the application of the camp. I don't know if you have those images as well.
We do. We do.
You see the the steps there?
I know it would be very simple for me to say okay to this project if the stairway did not go any closer to the water than what your stairs and small, well, the stairway or whatever, if if the new one does not go any closer than the the existing one, then I'm fine with it.
Okay.
So that might mean.
Yeah, the stairs on the front.
Yeah. But we're fine with anything that's at least I'm fine with anything that's not closer to the water than the existing stairs.
Perfect. I can do that.
Yeah, yeah.
How do we describe that, though? Because that's not what's in, that's not what's on the site.
What's what's finding in facts and a stipulation?
That's right.
Condition that the existing, the existing landing, nothing is constructed for closer to the water than the existing landing.
So like when we describe this in the findings of fact, it's more than what's on the application. It's the four by fifteen entry ramp with a six by six landing and a reconstruction.
Of the steps.
Or replace, a replacement. No, six by six landing with with stairs. Is that correct?
That's how I see it. Six by six landing and rampant set of stairs.
With with stairs, okay.
I'm wondering if Mr. Welch, you have a copy of your application?
Right in front of me. Yes, sir.
I was wondering if you could perhaps you have a fax machine?
I can scan it and email it. I do not have a fax machine.
Oh, I was thinking that it could put corrected or revised application up top.
Yeah.
And then fill in where the proposed construction is that proposing a ramp, six by six landing and stairway to the on the side.
Yeah.
And then we will have that and we can attach it to the ordinance as the amended version.
He has to, he he must include also the dimensions of the ramp.
Yeah.
They're not in the original application.
I I still think, I still like Sarah's suggestion that we put a condition on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no stairs to the, closer to the lake.
Yeah.
And and stairs limited to the to the side.
Okay.
So Steve, do you understand the revamp that needs to be done in our application?
I think so, but I'm, I'd like clarity.
Right, so essentially, I think we're saying you're gonna build a four by fifteen ramp. It's not, that's not on there for entry into cottage along the six by six landing and stairs. Go on, word, stairs.
Stairs to the sides, to the side of the deck, no closer to the water than the the existing.
Yeah, and stairs to the side of the deck. No closer to the water.
That's, I I thought that's how it looks on the drawing where you see the front of the camp and within a and the staircase ends prior to the front of the camp.
It does, but what we're looking at is number five on the first page where it says proposed construction or change in use.
Okay.
Hervage in there stating more precisely what you're doing, that's all.
Okay, so stairs going no closer than the current stairs and and no closer to the water than what's what's there. They, if if I.
We lost your audio.
Can I hear you?
Can you hear us, Mr. Welch?
Can you hear us?
Thumbs up if you can hear us. I guess we lost him entirely.
Well, he's visually.
Visually there.
Um, and our mic is live and and his mic is apparently live.
He probably, he had a earbuds, maybe they got, they went out of batteries power.
See, what do we do with this one?
Unless we can get him back shortly, I would say we proceed. I I mean, Mr. Welch accurately portrayed what is needed for the for the change to to the front page of the application and number, question number five. And and then we can handle it with, we have the backup of adding a condition to the approval.
Okay.
And if necessary, Richard, you could follow up with them this is later to you know, we're just remind them to get that amended application in.
Yeah.
I'm, I think I'm back now. Can you hear me?
All right.
We're having technology problems here.
All right. We want you to email it to me now and print it out.
I would, we can, I think with the condition will be okay, but he should get it to you.
Today.
Today.
Yeah.
Print this out. I'll change number five to to exactly what we had agreed on and and I'll put N A in the six, seven, eight, nine sections that don't apply through.
That would be excellent, Mr. Welch.
And also, don't forget, at the top, put amended amended version or whatever, amended application.
Yeah.
I will certainly do that.
Okay.
Okay, that'll allow us to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Oh, we're gonna have to email it to you.
Any what?
We're gonna email it to me this morning so I can print it out.
I will email it to you in the next ten minutes.
Okay.
Ten minutes. And we'll proceed. If nobody has any further questions, I guess my thinking as we go through the findings of that. Or you got that specific language that Peter?
Well, this is what I have so far. I I actually typed this in at home and of course I have had to amend it since our understanding's changed, but I have the applicant on date applied for, date would be it's today, the
Twenty-nine.
Yeah. Yeah, applicant sign for twenty-nine, twenty-two, apply for shoreland permit for four by fifteen entry ramp with six by six landing with stairs. Yeah.
Then exist to ones.
So then the you you want me to keep on?
Yeah, I would say just go down through and.
Satisfactory to you, sir. The the application was presented to the planning board on four twenty-nine, twenty-two. These findings of fact, conclusions of law were developed in conjunction with consideration of the permit application, conclusions of law based on the application materials, testimony, statements, evidence, documents, and other materials submitted to it and above blah blah blah. The project is or is not a permitted use and it is a permitted use. The, under section fourteen, table one, so that that's the great district for zone that will maintain safe, helpful question, conditions by a vote. The board found the standard was or was not met. And that'll be the usual language based on the application. Actually, I'm gonna put amended application. And public record. Get you to fill that part in. So we make a motion that was met.
Yeah, all those in favor or?
Sarah, yes.
Okay, Sarah, yes.
George, yes.
Rich, yes.
Okay, three is.
Be in favor, no opposed. I almost hear.
Will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to surface waters by a vote of board found the standard was met.
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I'll get this right before we get done. And I'm yes as well, Rich.
Okay.
By the way, Mr. Welch, we've got this series of questions we need to go through and it's just a little time consuming, but we'll get through it.
Okay, no worries.
Legal legalities. Do is I'll fill this in afterwards. Number three, will adequately provide for disposal of all wastewater. I would say this is not applicable myself.
Yeah, yeah, I.
Will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat by a vote of board found the standard was met.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Number five, will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters by a vote of the board found the standard was met.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I believe this next one's not applicable. Will protect archaeological and historic resources as Desmond Conference planned. Will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use by a vote of the board found the standard was met.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And number eight is where there's all the various land use standards in section fifteen. Yeah, by a vote of found that the standard was met based on the evidence and record further as it falls, and then we'll go one by one, minimum lot standards.
We voting on this as we go on?
No, we'll vote on it in mass, just figure out which ones are applicable.
I think that's probably applicable even though it it's not changing.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything.
Right. Next, B is principal and accessory structures. This would be an accessory structure. Campgrounds, that would be not applicable.
Yeah.
Individual private camps sites, that would be not applicable. Commercial and industrial uses. Parking areas known as proposed in a roads, driveways. It's not signs, no. Stormwater runoff.
Yeah, we'll leave that in there.
Yeah, it it's marginal, but but septic waste disposal systems.
Not applicable.
Essential services. Mineral exploration and extraction. You're not gonna do any gold mining out there, are you, Mr. Welch?
Not, not, not initially. I don't think so. Take a little more.
You do and find something, let us know.
Yeah, right. We'll be, we'll be down to help. Agriculture, N A. Timber harvesting and land management roads, N A. Clearing or removing of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting.
There's no clearing involved and then no trees being cut or anything. Okay. N A.
Hazard trees, storm damaged trees, dead tree removal, that's N A. Exemptions to clearing vegetation removal requirements that would be N A. Revegetation requirements, N A. Erosion and sedimentation control.
You're not gonna do any excavation digging or whatever other than by hand.
Yeah, no.
Shoreline shoreline stabilization, I guess it's N A. Soils that's N A since no septic water quality, we'll, I think we could leave that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Historical archaeological sites, N A, and resource protection, N A. So that leaves us with, by vote of the board found that this standard was missed and minimum lot standards, principal accessory structure standards, stormwater runoff standard. Erosion, sedimentation, control and water quality.
So we wish to vote on whether all those four, five, six standards are met.
Yeah.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rich? Yes. This is this time, we can entertain a motion to approve or deny the project.
No.
Oh, we we with condition, go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, we're gonna add that, we're gonna read the conditions first, huh?
Yeah.
And then add the condition that we'll talk about, number two.
Yeah.
You wanna make a proposal with what the condition will be?
The condition will be that this application will be approved. Making sure that the convenience of structure, the structure is gonna be added, is not gonna go beyond the the system structure as refer, as as in reference with the water, would not go beyond the watermark that is in presently. The master of this is George.
Now, the other kind of, well, it's a standard condition anyway, but I don't think we need to put anything specific in there about soil runoff and best management practices because it's actually a standard condition anyway, and this isn't really gonna make any effect.
Right. It's likewise for the stormwater to the extended.
Yeah.
So I kind of reworded a little bit, proposed structure shall not be closer to the lake than the existing stairs and deck.
Are we okay with that? When we
We're entertaining motion.
Go ahead.
I would, I would like to place a motion to approve the present application from Mr. Welch to make a ramp for this cottage as is described in this in this whole application.
The amended application.
The amended application, yes.
I'll second.
Who's in favor? Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Me, yes. Oh.
Okay, so.
Motion or did we, which which was to approve the, so we approve the application.
Yeah, yeah.
So Steve, when you when you get the chance, can you just let me know and you email that to me so that I can print that out?
I'm gonna print it out as soon as we're done this meeting and and amend it, fill in section five and then N As in section six, seven, eight. And and then email it right back to you. So we'll be there in ten minutes.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're approved. We'll get this, as soon as you get your thing to us, we will get your paperwork going. You'll get your permit by mail.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, take care.
Bye.
I'll give this to you, sign in a second here, Rich. I can fill in all the on the amended application in public record. What easier when we did this on computer and just copy and paste it in.
Yeah.
That's why kids don't want to work these days. Things off, you can see everything. Google everything.
You can Google everything.
Get all the answers on the internet, so it won't work.
It's amazing how many times I still come up with the wrong answer.
You have these electronically. And have you send those to us?
Which which ones?
The, the points that we, which we record the decisions.
Finding facts?
Yeah.
Good. You want, you want electronic copy?
Yeah.
Oh, sure, I can even.
All the ones that you gave us today.
The commercial and the strong, strong room.
Yeah, we have more punches in it. It's always nice to have one. Hard call. If you send it to them, then I can get busy doing, I'm doing that. Good work.
That's what you like, Sarah. I will do that for you.
Okay, shall we move on?
You want us to sign the original right away, or?
Um, well, I want to get the amended.
I told you.
I just noticed on your application that I missed a couple things in the total lot area. Lot areas within the shoreline zone in number eight. Nine.
You're getting this stuff on there is very helpful to moving quickly through.
Right, yeah, I, I guess I missed it. That's my fault. So, since he's here in person, can we go ahead and have him answer that? So the total water area, you know, do you want it yet? And all of it within the shoreline zone. And square footage of unvegetated surface.
The camp?
Yeah.
Uh, nine hundred and twenty-three.
So that's dry weed, parking, market.
Uh, no, that's just a camp full of branch.
Maybe, is it Mr. Burst? Conounce it? Uh, maybe he can do the same thing that. It's my thought anyway, that Mr. Welch is gonna do is to provide you an amended. A new one anyway, wanting to fill these in, because the project itself. Doesn't sound like these are important factors in whether he can do the project.
I would agree with that with the exception of the present structure square footage. Uh, and the proposed structure square footage to demonstrate that that's not increasing. Or at least that's my understanding at the moment.
Correct, it's not increasing, we're just changing the roof line.
Yeah, so the, you said nine hundred and twenty-three square feet, so Richard, if we could have on the original. Him add that and date it initially. It's, no, it's in the box below number ten.
Oh, I got you. Was it nine twenty-three yet?
Yes. All right, yeah. Uh, he'll need to initial and date that.
Mr. Burst, can you kind of. Explain in your own words, I guess, what it is you're actually doing. I think I've got it down by looking at.
Right, and, and also, did you bring photographs for us? Okay.
I didn't want.
Thank you for doing.
He sent several.
Oh, no, I didn't.
It's not there?
Oh, you know what? I'm operating off the one I printed off, the one we received originally. These are in there. Sorry, Richard, I. Uh, no, it's just my. Well, they're in the packet, right?
Oh, they are, they're not colored, I don't think.
Yeah, no, this is very helpful in terms of better understanding what's being proposed.
We would reject this permit for wearing color.
We haven't quite gotten to that point.
Looking at this photo here, in the end, when you're done, there's gonna be a. Speaker roof.
Exactly.
Coming this way and runoff would be going here and there rather than.
Instead of going right to the lake for runoff, it's gonna be going off to the sides, but that is going back, so we can keep the water out of the lake.
Okay.
All we're doing is changing the pitch, instead of it, if the lake is that back wall right now, it pitches this way.
Yeah.
When I get done, it'll pitch, my contractor, it'll pitch that way.
Okay, yeah.
You'll have nice windows in front of there.
Yes.
So you can see the lake.
Yeah, no, that, that will be.
And you mentioned that the gutters sending it back.
Yes, sir.
Okay, rather than just running off and.
Yeah, we're gonna put gutters and he's talking over. Yes, setting them so it doesn't, you know, catches it.
Okay, it, my thought here is where the gutters come down if. Do something like dig a.
Small dry well.
Dry well.
That's what I was thinking too.
Stone and.
Yeah.
And whatever.
Yeah, so it infiltrates in the ground rather than just. Is your property sloped? Yeah, as most are.
They don't go up to the.
Good point, Rich. We gotta command of the obvious.
Okay, Sarah, do you have any questions?
I don't.
No, not now, the, the photographs. You know, answered my questions, and it looks like from the drawings, the height of the new roof line will be. No higher than that of the existing main camp.
Correct.
Yeah, and the. There, there's no expansion whatsoever of the wall area.
No.
Okay. I'm okay with this, or at least moving forward.
Yeah, I am as well. Pretty straightforward.
These, I told my wife would take two hours. We might not go that long.
And I appreciate you guys being here, this is really helping me out, helping everybody.
Well, yeah, no, and, and the board overall.
Certainly appreciate you getting it ready.
Yeah, that's fine.
They have been a pleasure to deal with, I'm used to dealing with the water, but you guys have just been a pleasure to deal with.
In the morning before we had to make it through the day and come in at nighttime. Guy got thrown out the window.
Sorry, I could work for them and I still couldn't deal with them.
Okay. Are you along at all with the filling in the paperwork?
Yeah, yeah.
George, do you have another?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, what I did was I printed it out at home and, and filled it, the preliminary stuff and. The, so applicant Jeffrey and Joanna, ten Chestnut Road, lot fifty. Lot, map fifty, lot twenty-three dash oh one. Uh, and then the app, applicant on date, I didn't fill in. For shoreline zoning. Permit for change to roofline to slip away from lake. This is irrelevant to us, but I did put it in and change shingles to metal roof. You could have done that without a permit, but the. The application was presented to the plane board in four twenty-nine, twenty-two. Blah, 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 conclusions of law based upon the application materials testimony. About findings of fact, Belgrade Plane Board finds that the project. Is a permitted use.
We need to vote on.
Yeah, I think so.
Sarah, is this permitted use in?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Me, yes.
Will maintain safe and helpful conditions by a vote of the board found the standard was met.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I as well. Fall off the roof.
Yeah, no, that, that wouldn't be safe. And, and I will use based on amended application. And the public record. Basically, it's the recording. Um, will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to surface waters. This question, whether it's applicable even. Does the, yeah, yeah, no, it's, yeah, no, it's.
Stormwater.
Yeah, 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 you're right, yeah, so by vote of the board found the standard was met.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes.
I as well, yes.
Will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater, not applicable.
I would say that's correct.
Will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat by a. Vote of the board found this standard was met.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Me as well.
Um, will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters. By a vote of the board found the standard was met.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Me, yes.
The next one's not applicable, will protect archaeological and historical resources. We only have four in town.
Architecture was when he took the ceiling down. Most dropping for fifty years.
Those posts may be historic.
Maybe from the Vikings. Will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use by a vote of the board found the standard was met.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Me, yes.
Read through. It is in conformance with the provisions of section fifteen land use standards. Do these in mass, vote on it in mass, but. Minimum lot standards.
I guess we said that for the other one.
Yeah.
It's marginal.
Yeah, it is marginal, but, but it does meet it. Principal and accessory structures.
Yes.
Yes, campgrounds in a. Individual private campsites in a commercial and industrial in a. Parking in areas, roads and driveways and a signs and a. Stormwater runoff, I believe will be applicable, septic waste disposal system. Yeah. Central services, that's in a. Once you're planning a power line to Canada. Mineral exploration and extraction in a.
Same with you, you dig and find some.
Yeah, let us know, you find gold nuggets. Timber harvesting and land management in a. Clearing or removal of vegetation.
In a.
In a. Hazard trees in a. Exemptions from clearing and vegetation removal, that's in a revegetation requirements, that's in a. Erosion and sedimentation control, I suppose that would continue to be in there. Shoreline stabilization, that's in a, that's. Not for its project, soils would be in a, since there's no septic disposal. Water quality probably should stay in.
Oh, yeah.
Historical ar- archaeological sites in a, and it's not resource protection, so that's in a. So the ones that we need to vote on are in terms of by a vote of the board found the standard was met based on evidence in the record. And further as follows. But anyway, minimum lot standards, principal accessory structures, stormwater runoff. Erosion sedimentation control and water quality.
So of the list of land use standards, the ones that are applicable, vote on whether or not they are being met. Sarah?
They're meant, yes.
George?
Uh, yes.
Me, yes.
I can't do just like this on Thursday nights.
Because these are easy ones.
Yeah, that's because these are easy ones, that's why.
And you guys are grumpy and tired.
Well, I'm only on my second coffee, that, that might be part of it, too.
I never drank a cup in my life, they say it makes you irritable though.
And, and so we need to have a decision on the, on the overall permit. One thing we should note is that we have a standard condition of approval that will apply to your permit, and let me just read it for you. Managed stormwater runoff from newer expanded structures in accordance with section fifteen I of the Belgrade Shoreline Zoning Ordinance. And the main department of environmental protections, best management practices as outlined in conservation practices for homeowners publication. The, and just for your information, and correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, that. We used to mail that doc, that publication with the permit, we don't do that anymore, it's available electronically.
I believe it is.
On the town website.
I don't go from the town and just on the state site.
Well, it's definitely on the town, I, I, it's definitely on the state website, but. It needs to be accessible to, to applicants, readily accessible, and I think it's unrealistic for us to. Have a condition when, you know, they have to then go hunting and pecking for it on the D E P website.
Do we not send it anymore because just fell by the wayside or?
No, I, I think it was a conscious decision by Anthony to save paper. And.
Maybe when we send the permit, it should be in the permit, a little line in the bottom saying.
Yeah.
You can look at the website. And put that in the first, in the front page of our website.
I don't know if we have any B M Bs on.
I, I know when Nancy first implemented that, I double checked and was there, but I can't remember where. It's probably under the. Well, maybe we should verify that. I don't know, would you be able to find that, or you think, okay, if, if worse comes to worse, you can find it on, on the D E P website. I think you go to water quality and then there's a publications. Link that you can click on. If you have any trouble.
Contractor and I, because he's done some any of this.
Okay, yeah, or, or call Richard if you do have trouble and, and he can help you with that.
And the main thing with that, with your project is this dry well.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm all for that, keep the lawn dry and keep it out of the lake.
Yeah, yeah, and prevent any soil from washing out and all that good stuff, yeah. I didn't realize that's how you do your inspections, it's always associated with a barbecue.
Application, or that's up to the applicant.
The dry well?
The dry well.
Uh, well, i- it's one of the options under this B M T.
Cause he, we can't require him to do the dry well or maybe other mechanisms.
Yeah, your contractor may decide rather to do the, do an infiltration trench. At the edge of the roof, drip line infiltration trench, which is, seems to be pretty popular among contractors, at least in Belgrade, but. But I either need that best management practices. Best management practices, the dry well.
He's a Belgrade contractor, many of the years.
Yeah.
Where's Chestnut Road or whatever, uh lane?
You know where, oh, it's a game. Heading up here on eleven, on the right, there's a log cabin and a farmhouse before, Dorian?
Oh, Duran.
Duran.
Yeah.
Second road right there.
Down, okay.
Okay.
I always get it wrong, Duran or Dorian.
Yeah.
You got good neighbors.
So.
We need a motion, I guess.
Yeah.
Who's looking at me?
I'll I'll make a motion that we approve the uh application as as amended.
Okay. Oh, Sarah?
Yes.
Yeah, George?
Yes.
You approved your own amendment. I'm yes as well.
Alright, I voted early, but.
The board has uh approved your application. Soon as we get your amended version, Richard will take care of, now, we don't sign anything until we get.
Right, I'm gonna wait, yeah, like wait until everything's.
Right.
Amended and directly, that way when you sign, we know that you're signing it completed and amended. So I was gonna check and make sure that we finish uh number seven, eight, nine, uh number ten is one, so I know that answer. And uh I've already uh corrected the present and post square footage, I just have him sign an initial of that, so. We'll get together and square that away and I'll.
Okay.
Sign afterwards.
And what uh my thing here or thinking is I don't know whether any of that can be completed, are you here all day or you heading out?
No, it was probably Tuesday, so.
Monday, I will be. Out of commission for at least a week in terms of getting into the office and signing it.
Yeah.
So uh and with only three of us here.
But when is the contractor signing it?
He's ready, he's doing some stuff inside, now the windows.
Alright.
Uh is that gonna take just five minutes or?
Well, all I need is the answer to those few questions as far as total lot area and total lot uh. Lot within the shoreline zone and the square footage of unvegetated surface, and that's to include structures, driveway, parking, walkways, and patios. And the clear the opening of woody vegetation around the area, which is fairly large.
Yeah, you know, if. Just to move things along, if um you would be willing to initial and date the square footage.
Hmm.
Numbers, I mean, I would be willing to put an A in the other boxes.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah.
And get it, get it, get it done here now, because it it doesn't, a- all those criteria. Don't make any difference in this particular application, I mean, usually they do, but um because this is just. Changing the roof and not adding any footprint.
I appreciate that. Alright, so Jeff, can you just sign this copy and I'll get the board to sign. But you just.
And that way we avoid an issue.
Sir?
No, we don't have to approve any minutes today, okay?
No, thank goodness.
So you got it done, right?
There you go.
See, it's right here.
Yeah.
No, Jeff, I think you're all set, this needs to go with you as well. Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, so just to attach actually, how is my, that way everybody knows that you do have a permit.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. Have a good day.
Good job, good project.
They warm. Okay, so. I don't like it when there's an extra piece of paper flying around. Okay, yeah, yeah, why don't you do that?
I think that's not, no, it's here. No, no, it's, I don't want to make too concerned about it.
You got a busy day today, or it's just a relaxing day?
We're great, it is. I have just too many emails to do different things. So usually Friday mornings, I would take care of all, he he does his own thing and I do my own thing, and then. In the afternoon, we take uh, we try to take our fires off in the afternoon.
I noticed the other day you you sent a email that was like three oh three in the morning or something.
Oh, my God, you're as bad as Becky.
Marshawn goes, she probably hadn't gone to bed yet.
Well, um did they wake you up? That'll be my only concern, because I I I think what was sending emails, people was is.
Don't worry, his computer is on at three A M. in the morning.
But.
Nor is mine.
I I usually get up at like four thirty.
Really? Wow, I can do that occasionally, but I do that superficial, yeah, when you go fishing, but after several days, I'm dead to the world.
So so usually at that time, I, we gotta get out of this.
Yeah.
Are you guys adjourned yet?
Oh, never mind, we did it, actually.
We're talking about her bedtime.
Oh, well, that'll look good on YouTube.
Yeah.
Sound good?
Everybody's gonna know my routines.
I guess it doesn't matter what order we send it in, does it? So, Richard, um the uh. Findings of fact and and the app, the signed application for uh versus, is that how you pronounce it? I- is there and and the findings of fact for Mister Welch and with this.
You'll have.
So I will place a motion to adjourn.
Uh I I have you got any seconds?
What's that?
More motion to adjourn.
Um second.
I wanted, before we vote on that, I was just gonna mention, I was gonna mention it back when we dealt first application. There is a provision in statute that allows towns to allow a ramp. This one here fit, okay, I was concerned that this ramp was on the front of the building.
Okay.
Towards the lake.
Yeah, and if it was, we would have had to reject that, although there's a law that says. That the town can amend their ordinance and have a provision in ordinance to allow for a uh. Ramp rate away or whatever, access, to provide access to the structure for handicapped, for handicapped people.
And I thought it was, yeah, I could have sworn, and I think we discussed this via email, that there was. Something out there that said if it was an ADA type thing, that I could approve it. I thought, well, I couldn't find it.
Well, we made it, it's possible that that provision would allow the work town to have the code officer do that rather than.
Right, well, that wouldn't make sense.
It would, it would, um just this comes back to something, George. You didn't bring it up, I know, but when it was said the other day at the la- last meeting, uh George looked at me, uh. I looked at him and I I thought. Geez, that's that's strange, but I think it's correct, uh and that is. Most towns have the code enforcement officer issue shoreline zoning permits for new buildings.
Monument does.
Yeah, uh and I initially, I've been here ten years with this planning board, and over time. It got ingrained in me that the planning board issues uh permits for dwellings and.
Conforming ones.
Conforming ones, yeah. And the that can be the code officer under the minimum state guidelines, so a lot of our stuff, if we follow the state guidelines. We would probably actually be planners rather than permiters.
Well, except that we don't get that many applications where the structure is conforming, I mean, that was the exception to the rule.
Yes.
You know, our our bread and butter is nonconforming structures, I'm not conforming lots. But but you're right, it'd be one less thing that gets delayed by waiting for the planning board.
Yeah, but even even the nonconforming ones are allowed to go to the.
Oh, really?
Yeah, in the guideline.
Even an expansion of what's.
You guys know that, I didn't.
This is, this is, this is something the town is more restrictive of, they say if it's. Nonconforming lot or nonconforming structure, it's gotta go here, but the state guidelines, I believe. Is just if it's in the shoreline zone in a residential district, it's the code officer.
That's the way Monument does it.
So what the hell's the planning board?
Plan. Commercial.
Are we all set for the video?
Yeah, we need to vote, too.
Yeah.
We have to.
Don't turn it off till we vote, we we didn't vote to adjourn, we had a.
Motion.
All those in favor of adjourned? Sarah?
Yes.
Yes.
Rich, yes, I gotta remember to uh start saying something, Sarah, every time it's.
Is is a, is a uh.